Let the November 2020 Brookhaven Borough Council Workshop come to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Where's the flag?
Right there. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic, to one nation, to the government, and justice for all. Thank you all. Mr. Wilworth, will you give us a roll call? I'm sorry, Ms. Boyle, will you give us a roll call?
She doesn't do it.
Joan, are you there?
I'm here.
Joan, I said.
Okay, Mr. Heller.
I was gonna have Ms. Boyle do it, but I don't think she can hear us. So go ahead, Mr. Wilworth.
He doesn't do it anyway. She's not the secretary. Mr. Heller.
Present.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Here.
Mayor Leslie.
Present.
Mr. Vasquez.
Presence.
Mr. Gilroy.
Presence.
Mr. Pappas.
Miss Sewicki.
Here.
Present.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
And Joan's not here, and Mr. Wilworth.
Joan's not here.
Okay, roll call is complete. Mr. Pappas and Mrs. Boyle are not online.
Joan, Joan is on, but she's muted. Joan, if you can hear us, you can unmute your mic if you, if you can do that for us. In the meantime, anyone for public discussion? Hold on, let me let Mimi in before I ask that. She just popped up. Give Mimi McGovern a second to join, she might want to speak. Play some Jeopardy music while we're waiting.
She's connected.
Mimi, we waited for you to log on to a call on public discussion. Do you have anything for public discussion? If so, unmute yourself. Going once, going twice. Public discussion's closed until the end. Mr. Wills, will you give us the solicitor's report, please?
Yeah, I think Mr. Dykes may have had something for a public discussion.
Just, if I may.
Go ahead, Thomas, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry, I just, you're waving my hand. Tom Dykes, 305 West Brookhaven Road. Question on plant setbacks off of roads, especially at corners. There's a house at the corner of Brookhaven and Mount Vernon, has a very huge bush that if you actually stop at the designated white line for people to stop at, you cannot see towards Edgemont Avenue at all. It also has a fence around that front, that side yard and around the front, and there's two other large bushes that are up closer to the road, that as you pull up closer, block the view of the road. So I'm wondering if that's what could be causing some of the issues on Brookhaven and Mount Vernon. Are these new bushes? I'm not sure if they're new or not. The fence is definitely new. It's three foot high, it's a split rail fence. It now has. That seems to be, that, that doesn't seem to be view obstructing. If you're in, I'm actually, if I'm in my SUV, SV, SUV and driving along, if I stop at the white line, you know, the wide white lines we're supposed to, I cannot see Edgemont Avenue at all from that corner. From, because of the fence or the bushes? Because of the bush. The closer you get, there's a two smaller, there are two bushes, two thinner bushes, and the height of the fence. I've had a couple of friends, a couple of people I know, that have made comments that have cars, and said they have a hard time because of that fence. I thought Brookhaven was no fences in the front yards.
Actually, it's not quite the front yards, it's your, your building footprint. So generally, that, with the size of our lots and the placement of most of our homes, i- it is mostly for the front yard. I thought, I thought the same.
My understanding is it can't come past the front of your house.
No, it actually, no, it actually can in some, in some situation.
Okay, well.
Yes, Mr. President, we send the code enforcement officer over to the property to take a look at it. If the sightlines are being adversely impacted, that's something the borough may wish to look at.
Okay. And Tom, we'll take a look at it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
We'll send Bob over there. Anyone else for public discussion? All right, public discussion's closed. Mr. Wills, will you give us the solicitor's report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I had forwarded to Borough Council earlier this morning my comprehensive solicitor's report. I will highlight just a few issues. Number one concerns the Arbor developers. This is a two-lot subdivision over on Zoor Street. Last week, on November 17th, the planning commission met and recommended conditional approval for this two-lot subdivision plan. I have recently drafted a resolution for Borough Council's consideration at its December 7th meeting, granting conditional approval for the subdivision plan. I will be forwarding that to Borough Council for its review and consideration as early as tomorrow. Second issue concerned the property at 701 Marshall Road. This is a property I believe all of council is familiar with. I had filed a complaint in equity and a petition for preliminary injunction against the property owner in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. At an abbreviated hearing held before Judge Barry C. Dozer last week, on November 18th, Judge Dozer granted the borough's petition for preliminary injunction, and ordered the property owner to comply with the borough's property maintenance codes and ordinances, and also ordered the property owner to partially reimburse the borough for the legal fees and court costs it has expended in compelling the various pleadings that were filed in the Delaware County Court. Third issue concerns the sewer backup claims that we're having, or at least some of them in the borough. I have drafted a proposed resolution for Borough Council's consideration, adopting and implementing the sewer backup claim procedures as recommended by the borough's liability insurance carrier, that is Gallagher Basset. And so that's something Borough Council may wish to implement again at the December 7th Borough Council meeting. Fourthly and final on my report concerns the Act 17 COVID-19 benefits for police officers. As Borough Council may be familiar with, back in.
Keep popping here real quick, it's important.
Governor Wolf signed into law Act 17, which provides up to 60 days of full salary benefits for police officers who are diagnosed with COVID-19, or are quarantined due to a COVID-19 exposure, incapacitated from performing their duties. As a result of that COVID-19 legislation, I have recently forwarded to the mayor and to the police chief, an Act 17 COVID-19 benefits policy statement for distribution in the Borough Police Building, as well as an Act 17 COVID-19 Salary Benefit Application Form, and proposed correspondence from Mayor Leslie, addressed to the officers should Act 17 quarantine benefits be accorded to them. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress. And that is my report.
Sorry, I had trouble unmute myself. Madam Mayor?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I just have two things on my agenda. One is the Dunkin' Donuts is going to have a grand opening on Saturday, December 5th at 11:00 a.m. And the other thing on my agenda is Mrs. Christina Johnson wanted us to let everybody know that they will be having their celebration of life, taking part in our, they would like everybody to take part in the annual candle life celebration on Saturday, December 5th. They will begin lighting the candles at 6:00 p.m. It will be Adams Drive, parts of Lincoln Drive, Chandler, Mount Vernon, from Brookhaven to Chandler, Sweeney Circle, Conley Circle, and Wes Maple.
That list is gonna grow too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
There'll be more.
She just sent this over, so I'm just, you know, reading what she sent us. The rain date will be Sunday, December 6th, and she hopes that others will join in. So I just wanted to make sure that we put that out there to our residents. The only other thing I have is, please make sure that your masks and gloves are not being discarded out on the streets of our borough. A lot of people are complaining about it, and we want to keep the borough clean. So just a reminder out there, to dispose your gloves and masks properly. End of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas is not present. Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee met on Thursday, and we continued our work on the food truck ordinance and the permit application. I did just send over to council and to Mr. Wills what we have done so far. I just sent it maybe a half hour ago, I apologize for the late notice, but I would like everyone to take a look at it. Please give me your input. This has been a work in progress for the past few months. It's, it, it was, it took us quite a, quite a bit to get to where we are right now, so I would appreciate any and all comments on what you would like to see changed, or if you like what we've done so far, because this is gonna become a popular ordinance, I think. So if you could take a look at that, I would appreciate it. I also wanted to say that the parade was awesome. I am very fortunate that I was able to walk in it, and just to see the look on the residents' faces, it was so worth it, the weather was beautiful. So thanks to the parade committee and to everyone who made it spectacular. And lastly, I just would like to say that I would like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. It's gonna be a little different this year with COVID, but, you know, if you can spend time with your family, please do, enjoy the time, and, you know, hopefully everyone will have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuchs. Ms. Sewicki.
Thank you. I do have a couple things tonight. I want to begin with the 2021 Borough Calendar. I think council is aware that Pat and John Wilworth have been working for some time on the calendar, and it will be mailed to December, and you should receive it by Christmas. It will be for the 2021 calendar year, and I personally want to thank John and Pat for all their hard work, because it took a long time for them to do it. The other item I wanted to mention before I get into the budget is the newsletter. Most residents probably have missed our Borough Newsletter, which was discontinued because of COVID, and the newsletter will start again hopefully in the spring of this year in a new format. We're gonna go digital, and it should be very, very helpful to people. It'll be on the Borough website. We will have paper copies in the Borough building for anybody who does not have digital. And I also want to thank Pat and John again, because they're gonna be handling it, and they will be giving out an email to council about how to submit your reports for the new newsletter. So hopefully it'll be very good, and we will appreciate having a new format. I do want to get into the budget for a few minutes, so I can at least get people on board for 2021. We all know that 2020 was a very tough year for our residents and for our government, as far as our income and expenses. Our borough has been able to get through this year by watching our expenses very carefully. I'm gonna be highlighting our Borough Budget, which has four categories: general fund, sewer fund, trash fund, and road fund. There's no tax increase for the general fund. The sewer fund, only the residents who have sewer processing by Delkor, there will be a $36 increase that they're sending to us, which will be on your tax bill. Trash fund, there's no tax increase because we're in the second year of our contract. Road fund is solely funded by Harrisburg's lump sum that they give us every year to assist us in our roadwork, so that's not gonna be what we're dealing with. There is a Borough inspection period for the budget. It will be from December 8th to December 21st in the Borough Office. Any resident who wants a copy of the Borough Budget can obtain one by coming to the Borough Office. The adoption for the budget is 7 o'clock, Monday, December 21st, 2020, and I'm just gonna highlight some of the more interesting points of the budget, because it does go on for some, some pages. Our opening balance is projected at $540,000. Our tax revenues for next year should be $3,900,542. Licenses and permits, $206,000. Fines and forfeits, $35,000. Interest and rents, $74,868. Departmental earnings, $254,200. Disbursements, $44,925. Miscellaneous is $1,000, and $110,000 is basically grants, giving us a revenue of $5,384,053, which is less than we had last year. Most items in the budget are pretty much in line with what they've had. We've tried to really keep things as limited as we possibly can. Of course, when you deal with police, we have, police budget is one of the largest budgets we have, and fire, we do have money in the budget for our escrow that we have for 2023 purchase of our new fire truck. So we are, we will be putting money in next year, $105,000 for that item. There's always a lot of items for public works, recreation, and we're dealing with insurance. Insurance is also a very large item. So the expenditures are also balanced, so it is the $5,384,053. Trash fund is $789,515, and as I said, it was the second year of our contract with the trash hauler. The road fund for next year is $530,806, and that comes solely from money that we do receive in from Harrisburg. Next year, we're anticipating liquid fuels, $206,606. Our sewer fund is based on the sewer fund, the system, which is all the miles and miles of pipe we have in the ground. And then we have the sewer plant, which people who live in the 4th and 5th precincts are dealing with that, because most of the other people in Brookhaven go through Delkor, which goes into Chester, the Chester Plant. And we will have, there will be a list at the last page of your budget that explains what the rentals are. So if you're in Zone 1, 2, and 3, it's $430 for your sewer items next year. If you're in Zone 4, which is the plant, $474.69, and Hilltop and Creekside are $428 per unit. So, and that's all I'm really gonna, anybody who has questions, we can, we can do them later in the meeting, or, you know, move to a public discussion.
Janice, I do have, I just have one question. Are we going to make, I know you said that anyone can come up to the borough, but are we going to put it out on the website so that people that don't want to come in to the building will have access to that budget?
That's probably a great idea. We do legally have to have copies here for inspection, but that's a good idea, we can do that.
Yeah, I just need it in PDF. Yep.
I can get Delilah to do that, that's a great idea. We've never done that before, but that's better. We always have had people come to the window and we give them a copy. It's people who may not have a computer, and, but that's fine, I'll talk to Delilah and we'll be able to do that for you. That's a good suggestion, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Are you done, Janice?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Mr. Vaskis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a short report today, just wanted to give everybody a heads up that Zone 4 of the leaf collection is now done. This leaf truck is gonna only come to each street in a barrel one time, and leaves should be out by 8:00 a.m. Monday morning. Once the street's complete, there is no return pickups, no return calls to hit your street again. So please, you know, be, be wary of when your street is gonna be picked up. Next week, there will be Zone 1, then it will be the 7th zone, Zone 2, or, I'm sorry, Zone 1 is the 30th. The 7th is Zone 2, and the 14th is Zone 3. I believe we have that zone posted as well on the website, Donna?
Yes, it is on the website.
Okay, so if anybody was curious as to what street your zone is, please reference our website, and that, that's all I have.
It's, it's also on Brookhaven 19015 Politics and the official Brookhaven Borough Facebook page. If you search, if you search in the group for Leaf Collection, it should come up.
Yes. Also, if, you know, say you, you happen to miss this, you can always, you know, put, put your leaves out for trash, and, or you can compost them yourself, so there's, there's options for you. That's all I have for tonight. I'll, I'll have my full report for the council meeting.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you all better. Mrs. Heller.
Okay, I just have two quick things, just kind of echoing what Donna stated about the parade. I really wanted to give a special thanks to the co-chairs of the parade committee, Vaughn Donaway and Linda Rifford, as well as the rest of the committee members, which was also Stephanie Donaway and Virginia Jenny McGee. A lot of people don't realize all the, I guess, behind the scenes that go on with creating such an amazing parade. A lot of the planning started in June, and it actually was a little bit later this year because of COVID, but a lot of hard work went into that parade. I also want to thank the Brookhaven Fire Department, the Brookhaven Police Department, our public works, they did an amazing job cleaning the streets and actually putting up the signs, and actually going behind the parade and cleaning up as well, as well as our, our fire police as well. So it, it really takes a village to make that parade as successful as it is, so a real nice shout out to all those that participated and helped out. The only other thing I have is the rec board will not be meeting for November or December. All of the December events, the tree lighting, the senior luncheon, as well as the tree lighting, has been canceled because of COVID. So hopefully we'll be able to start January 2021 with a big bang. And just again, to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and spend a lot of quality time with family this year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Gilroy.
Hey, Mr. President. I don't have much report here, it's been a, it's been a heck of a, two weeks here, it's been really busy, right? I feel like it, it's been months on here, I've been really trying to get used to the process, and introduced myself to the police chief and Delilah, and sat in the office there with Mr. Wilworth, really just trying to understand the process and see where I can really fill in and help out the best. I want to echo the same thing as Jerry and Donna. The parade, that was fantastic, the weather was great. I don't know how the crowd size was, but i- it looked like there was a lot. It was, every street was packed, and there was kids smiling, and it was a great time, it really was, and it was something I think we all really needed. And the planning and the process of that is just immense, and I can't thank enough of everyone who really, you know, spends months and countless hours working on the parade committee. And with that, I just want to pass it back over here to the President, just thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mike. I don't have a whole lot, I'll have a full report for the December council meeting, but I want to, again, like everyone else is doing, thank the parade committee, Mr. Donaway, Mrs. Rifford, Mrs. Donaway, Mrs. Heller, Mrs. Fuchs, Jenny, and everyone else involved, sorry if I missed anyone. I was in a, I was in a bubble, I refused to walk in the middle of the pandemic, but I was in my car, I was there, I enjoyed it. I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, no matter how you celebrate it. And I want to give everyone a reminder, we have a huge spike in COVID in the borough. To date, we have 176 cases, 38% of our cases have come within the last 30 days. 67 cases within the last 30 days within the borough. So we are, it has come raging back. We did get some more good news this morning, we have a third vaccine that is ready for submission to the FDA for emergency use authorization. I also spoke to State Rep. LeAnn Kruger this morning, or I texted her, actually. She was on a conference call with Secretary Levine and Governor Wolf. They believe that 3 million doses will be ready by mid-December, so almost immediately after the FDA grants the, the emergency use authorization. And I, I saw on the news, I believe, that there would be 20 million doses. It's 40 million doses, but it's a double dose, so we should have 20 million doses ready by January from the Pfizer vaccine, so that's great news, that's, I think, 8% of the population. So the end is near. I think it's near, we're getting there. I also want to thank Janice, Delilah, the Budget Committee, for the job they did in avoiding a tax increase in the, in the, the economic climate that we're in, the, with the COVID impact. I, I can't put an exact figure on it, but I know in our early meetings back in April and May, we cut something, something around $450,000 to $500,000 from the budget, to avoid a tax increase and to have as little impact on our residents as possible. We were worried about the hit to the, the mercantile tax and the, the earned income tax, but you guys did a fantastic job of avoiding a hike, really, really a great job. I don't know what next year we'll bring with that, but we'll, we will put the same efforts forth then, but that's all I have. Again, thanks everyone for the parade and happy Thanksgiving. And Mr. Catania.
Thank you for the regular meeting. We'll have, I had mentioned before, we had this 2018 Small Water and Sewer Grant, which is for Brookhaven Road Sewer Rehabilitation. We received authorization to advertise that project last month, we'll have those, the bid tabulation, hopefully our award recommendation for the December meeting. Jay had mentioned Arbor Developers in the Zoor Street subdivision. We also hope to have an escrow amount for consideration for that project. And very recently, we received a series of complaints about sewer odor, sewer plant odors down off the Trimble Run condos. We've checked them out numerous times, and each time, it comes up with nothing, we don't even go down, we don't find an odor as we go down there. I think it's important that what we do is start to log these complaints as they come in, and that log should include the location, the date, the time, and in particular, the wind direction. For example, we had one this morning that, that the public works checked out, and when they go down there, the wind's blowing in the opposite direction of the Trimble Run condos, so it's almost impossible that it was, the source was the treatment plant. So these kind of things should just be logged, so we can develop some type of trend to see if there's any, any correlation between, you know, something that's going on, whether at the plant or elsewhere, to try to mitigate this, this issue. And then finally, I can take a little bit of time on this, I apologize if it is too long. Back in September, this is about the, the, we call the Chapter 94 Prohibition Letter. Back in September, September 2nd to be exact, the borough was, sent a letter from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, that the treatment plant, through what they call the Chapter 94 Report, and the Chapter 94 Report's just based on an added report that's submitted to DEP, which gives a summary of, of the sewer plant, you know, the amount of flow coming in, the, the percent treatment, the, the strength of the, of the sewage coming into the plant. So we received notice that there were some overloads to the plant, both were hydraulic overload, which is too much flow, and organic overload, which is basically the strength of the sewage is, is too much for the plant to handle. The hydraulic overflow, the flow overflows, was a three-month period from November of 2018 to January of 2019, it was those three months exceeded the flow. The organic overload was three separate months in 2019, I believe it was May, August, and October, and there's, it's kind of hard, because they're kind of, there's no correlation between the two. Anyway, the, the letter from DEP basically says, you know what, you have a problem there, you can't allow any more new connections to that, to that system, and you need to provide us with a corrective action plan and a connection management plan within 90 days of the letter, which that 90 days is set to expire December 2nd. So we've been working on, on providing that response to DEP. And I just want to briefly go through the corrective action plan, so that council understands what this is going to entail, and then I'll talk about some, some of the, the consultants or the partners that, that we feel would be appropriate to bring in, to assist in, in implementing this corrective action plan. So for the hydraulic overload portion of it, DEP kind of, they do provide some guidelines for it, so the guidelines basically mapping, metering, televising, hydraulic character So the guidelines basically mapping, metering, televising, hydraulic characterization, and then rehab, and then follow up with some more monitoring. We're gonna, we're gonna propose to modify it a little bit. So the mapping, a flow monitoring system. This this flow monitoring system is not exactly meters. It's it's more up to date. They call it micro INI detection. It's 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 small level sensors that are putting multiple manholes through the system. It kind of attracts the the changes in the flow as a result of of rain events. So we're not, we won't be actually measuring gallons. We'll be measuring the the influence of the rain on the system. It's it's a very cost-effective way to do this this type of monitoring. It doesn't require manhole entry. We can put, literally, we can put about fourteen to fifteen of these monitors in the system for the same cost of of putting maybe three or four meters in the system. So it seems to be the the feasible, the better way to go, I should say. Manhole inspections will be included, and I don't mean just open up manhole. Our old conventional way of doing it would be to open up a manhole, get a flashlight, maybe a mirror, and you look down the manhole and document the system through one of our partners. They have a panoramic three D digital camera that is lowered into the manhole, and you get a full assessment of the manhole. And again, it it's the it's it's the new new trend. It's the way to go. Stuff that you may normally miss with a a above-ground camera, or I'm sorry, flashlight and mirror. You won't miss with this this camera. So we're gonna call that phase one initial screening. That's what we're gonna propose to do as our phase one, just those three steps.
Now, that that video is also saved as a file if we ever have to reference it as well, correct?
That's correct. And that that should mention it. This, that work will be done by one of the, one of the, one of the consultants that that we've been dealing with is is Duke's Technologies. You may or may not, some of you may have heard of Duke's. Duke's is, it was was a chemical root treatment for sanitary sewers. And they've been around for quite some time, and we've used them. And in fact, we still use them in the borough to do root treatment. They've expanded their their scope of services to include some sewer system evaluations. So they have a program they rolled out recently called the three sixty program, which is a comprehensive look at the system. And, you know, I I think I mentioned before, when when we start to, as engineers, when we start to look at at these problems in the system, we have a lot of tools in our toolbox. We can meter, we can smoke test, we can dye test, we can video inspect. Duke's has found a way to bundle that up into one package for for this, I'm gonna call it this, this screening. It's a great way for us to be able to get a a quick snapshot of the problem areas in the system and then be able to better prioritize our our resources. So instead of using a socket socket approach, we're we're video inspecting every line at a at a cost per foot, we can do the screening first and then take that same effort and put it into one particular area that that exhibits the the highest incidence rates of of wet weather flows getting into the system. So Duke's has provided that. I'm gonna tell you that, I'm gonna give you two different numbers. I need the the better sounding number first. That cost is a dollar thirty-five per foot. Thirty thousand feet, though. So their cost is forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars in order to provide that that service. Then that, like I said, that only provides screens. Then we go to phase two, which is sewer assessment. And this is where we would, we would use public workforces to to do this work. It would include televising of areas that are identified through this screening. We would do dye testing. Where where storm sewers are close to or crossing sanitary sewer pipes, we would do some dye testing. We could potentially do some smoke testing. I'm not a particular, you know, I'm not a fan of smoke testing, but it it has its merits in certain occasions. So at the initial screening shows us areas that require smoke testing. We may bring someone in to do some smoke testing. And then some some flow meter analysis. And this flow meter analysis would basically just be looking at the the metering data that we have already available. Wouldn't be installing new meters. It would be using the the flow monitoring metering that we have at the treatment plant. And then the the third phase would be private laterals. What we've learned over the years is we spent a lot of efforts into addressing the systems that are owned by the towns as far as addressing the INI. I know INI, by the way, is inflow and infiltration. It's stormwater, groundwater getting into the sanitary sewer system, which it's not designed for. We don't want that. So it's, we we have efforts to try to remove this, this INI or excessive wet weather flows out of the system. Anyway, we spent a lot of time trying to 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 upgrade and rehabilitate the municipal systems, you know, the pipes that we own in the streets. And after spending some time and money, it it multiple studies have shown, you know what, a good portion of the of this problem is not in the borough pipes. A good portion of this problem is coming from private lateral. So if you can imagine, if we have thirty thousand feet of publicly-owned sanitary pipe in this area, there's probably three hundred thousand feet of small private laterals, the pipe that's coming from your house connecting to the to the borough's sewer main. So, you know, those, the, while they're smaller downward pipes, the magnitude of the number of those as far exceeds what we have. So these these studies have shown over the years that private layers are a contributor to the problem. So our phase three would be, let's start to look at some private laterals. And by that, I don't mean going in people's houses, knocking on the door and running a camera down their 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 sewer lateral. But basic education would be the first step, you know, letting people know that, you know, your sump pump that you have in your basement shouldn't tie into your laundry tub or shouldn't tie into the pipe that's coming through your basement wall. That's a sanitary sewer. And you're not helping the cause by by putting that in the system. That needs to go outside and and piped away. And then the other, the other key factor for private laterals is, I'm gonna say probably at least seventy-five percent of the houses have cleanouts or vents out in the lawn area. And some of those are susceptible to to letting stormwater get into, especially it's a low-lying area. Those cleanouts and vents can can easily take in a large quantity of water on on a heavier storm event. So that that the private ladder, our private lateral program would be, you know, just doing a drive-by of those of those sewer vents and cleanouts in front of the houses and then the public education system. There's one more component that I want to measure, and I want to mention, but I'm not sure that we want to implement it at this time. DEP, on other cases, has been pushing for private lateral inspection ordinances, basically requiring property owners to expend funds to bring a sewer specialty contractor coming to televise their sewer lateral and then make corrections to that if they find any deficiencies. It has been frowned upon by, you know, many many people in your position. You know, we don't want to put it incur a unnecessary cost on our residents. And so it it hasn't really flown too many, in too many towns in Delaware County. There's a handful of them that passed ordinances. And if, I'm gonna say, if ten of them have passed them, eight or nine of them are time of sale. So only when properties are transferred through a sale do you do this inspection. I think our initial draft of the corrective action plan to DEP will not include that. But I fully expect that that their review and response will be, the borough needs to consider a private lateral. So I just want you to make aware of that, that that will be out there at some point in time.
If we were to adopt that, we could make it only upon transfer, though, correct?
Sure, and that may.
That would be the only format I would support with that.
Yeah, that that would benefit us going that route, I think.
Right. And that's where we may, you may consider preemptively doing that so that we can say, we we've addressed it rather than letting them come back to us and say, you know, you guys need to do this. But I'll just, I'll just say that and and you can think about it and let me know how you want to proceed with that. And then ultimately, we'll, I'm sorry.
No, the only question I have in reference to that is how the, how do we enforce that? How do we enforce it if we're gonna do it through the transfer through the sale? Is that something that we, as a borough, would have to enforce or?
I would expect that as as the, as the use of occupancy certificate was applied for, for the transfer of the property, one of the conditions would be that they would have to provide a sewer lateral inspection certificate from a either a plumber or a sewer specialty contractor. And another Providence township has one similar. And and they have a, they have a system where where there's a local plumbing council that trains local plumbers. So they they have a much larger pool for pickup. So now, if we ever go that route, that would be something to look at as far as how you want to handle those inspection certificates.
That that was my other question is this, who is like the authorized, who, like, is there a group of individuals that would have to do it? Or is it just any plumber that could do something like that? So, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, real quick, how much something like that ballpark number costs for?
The inspection? Lateral inspection?
Yes.
Anywhere from about two, I'm gonna say like two fifty to five hundred dollars.
Okay, so just a little, okay.
Which which wouldn't, wouldn't be too much of a burden upon the transfer of a property.
Thank you. That's not the burden. The burden is if you have to repair something, then then obviously your repair is is expensive. I will point out that as most properties are transferred, most buyers are now, or are always have been getting these home inspections, they're looking at the roof, you know, the plumbing system, the heating system, all. I it'd always bother my mind is why you would leave this out, because if your shore backs up, you have a pretty big problem, and it's not a very pleasant incident. So why not include that as part of the home inspection for for any property transfer?
It cost me twelve thousand dollars not doing it, so.
Right, right.
That was, that was a great, great bill, I had.
So after we do all this, this screening and assessment, all then, we need to develop a a rehabilitation program. You know, what needs to be done in order to reduce the wet weather flows or the hydraulic overload to the plant? And we'll do that. And I want to tell you that that won't be another cheap the price tag on that as well as as we figure out what needs to be done. And so that would be the hydraulic part. I didn't even mention the organic portion yet. So then your organic portion, I said, that's kind of the strength of the the sewage coming into the plant. The plant's designed to be able to treat so much, and when we're exceeding that, the plant can not meet its permit requirements. I'm unaware of any incidents where we've actually violated our our discharge permit. But it also tells us that, you know, we may be teetering on that point where the plant's not going to be able to operate like it needs to. For the organic overload, that's way above, I'm gonna hate to say it, way above my pay grade, what I can do. So we we've engaged or asked Gannett Fleming, which is a a local, kind of a local consultant that we've used in other sewer projects to provide, and that I proposed for that, and their proposal is actually up eight thousand dollars to provide an assessment of the organic overload at the at the plant. So I think what I would need to do at our, at our next meeting would be to authorize or ask the okay to get those two things moving forward. And unfortunately, I think before that next meeting, we'll have to submit this corrective action plan. So if anybody has any questions or comments on that, I don't necessarily need them tonight, but maybe by the end of this week, if you could email me and and let me know what your thoughts are, what we need to do with that.
Yeah, I just, I just want to reiterate that this is us responding to DEP's, you know,
signs.
Call for these violations. This isn't something we're going out just doing on our own. We're doing this because we had these violations. And right now, this is the friendly way of them saying, hey, you got a problem. You know, this needs to be fixed before, you know, they really send somebody out and then they can hit us with a book.
Very important. That is, that's critical because this this is, this is serious. I mean, this is, these problems have been, have been dating back for a while. And this is the point where they said, you know, you you need to do something now. And don't do it, they'll file consent orders, penalties and fines, and and those can be significant. And right now, they're telling us you can't allow any new flows into the system. I'm unaware of any new development that's being proposed, but that in itself is a is a pretty steep penalty as now.
So, so just so I have a clear understanding. So we're doing this corrective plan that has these three phases. The three phases, the that forty-two thousand that you gave us, is that just the part that Duke's consultant is doing for that phase one, or is that forty-two thousand including the 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 screening? It's including the televising, and it's also including the the private laterals? Or is that forty-two thousand just for phase one of the screening portion of it?
That is just for phase one. My thought process was that phase two, the inspections, dye testing could be done by public workforces. And then phase three, which is the private lateral, we would, we have some in our office, we have some public education material that we've gotten from various sources over the years that we would, you know, provide to the borough to distribute to those people in the treatment plant service area. And then the lateral inspections can either be done, again, I think that can be done by public works. It's a relatively drive-by kind of inspection.
I'm sorry. The other question that I had is is that, so we submit this plan to DEP by twelve two, because that was our deadline, which was was at thirty days in writing. So the the other question is, is that for phase one, phase two, phase three, is there a specific timeline of when all this has to be complete? Or do we have to wait until the DEP comes back and says, okay, we're accepting your corrective plan? Or do we start moving forward before the DEP responds back to us?
The plan requires us to put a timeline in there. And I can tell you that the timeline I have right now, I I have to do some quick math, but it's three months, six months, ten months, sixteen months, and another, it's about eighteen months. I I put in the timeline to complete this. Now, that, I might point out, that includes remediation and everything, so that, you know, I might even change that before we get in there. But the assessment part of it, it's three, six, eight months for the assessment part of it. And I wouldn't do anything until we get approval from DEP or the corrective action plan.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Charles?
That's all. I think I've spent enough time.
Thank you, sir. That's what we needed. Chief Montella.
Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening, sir.
Just on the firehouse end, like you said, we've been really ramped up here. We've been getting hit hard with the COVID as of late, and it just continues as the days go by. So we've been on top of it, and we've been getting our notifications of positive patients. And our deconting procedures are keeping our people safe so far. We got a letter from the county yesterday stating that they're getting ramped up for the medicine or vaccine for first responders. We're compiling our active member roster to be submitted to the county and to our dispensing place, which will be Crozier Hospital. Should the time come for the first responders to be able to get vaccinated or the medicine that's going to be provided. So, like you said, they're, they're estimating maybe mid-December, mid to late December, so.
They're all operating under the assumption that that Pfizer's vaccine is going to be approved. I don't think there's a chance it doesn't get approved at this point. So you're telling me that you think that your your guys and gals would be able to receive the vaccine, but within, before the end of December?
Well, they're, they're hoping sometime in December, yeah, mid-December.
So Delaware County will get a fair share of the vaccine?
Yeah, and they each fire department EMS, they've been given a location where they could receive it, and then they'll submit a notification to us at the time that it's going to be dispensed and for us to show up. We just need fire company ID, and our name has to meet the roster name so that just anybody can't show up and just get a free shot, you know? So that's where we're at with that. We're just hoping that something pops up soon. Hopefully, everybody wants to get it, just to protect themselves, but.
If if they don't want it, I'll I'll take one. I'll I'll tell you.
Yeah, that's, that's what they're kind of, I don't know what the standpoint is on that as far as, I guess, maybe, I don't, I don't, they didn't say, I think you guys got notification as well on that, didn't John Wilward? You guys get some type of notification on the same thing? Not sure. But we did get notified.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Yeah, so I'd imagine emergency management and possibly maybe even borough officials, but don't quote me on that. But, you know, you could be put into a situation as well, but I'm not sure. So I don't want to overstep my bounds.
I didn't hear what he said.
Yes, John.
I'm not sure whether you guys are going to be able to jump on that as well.
No, I heard, I heard that. I was, I heard that, I'm sorry. I was referring to John Wilward.
Yeah, I think it's yes for that.
Oh, okay. Who wants to go first?
Yeah.
That's the next question.
I'm not the first one. I'm a frozen stuff.
But that's where, that's where we stand with that, just staying on top of PPE.
Now, just quit talking over the chief. Anything else, sir?
That's about it. Thank you.
Speaking of that, I'd like to thank Loz today. Mrs. Heller could attest gave five hundred K ninety-five masks to the police department. Is that right, Mrs. Heller?
Yeah, also.
Mrs. Heller fell asleep on us. I believe that's.
No, I did not. Yes, yes, it was five hundred K ninety-five masks. Were donated to the police department today. The chief definitely picked it up later on this afternoon. So, yeah.
Good work by Liz. They can share them with the FDA if they need them, so. Anything else, sir?
That's it. You guys have a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy yourselves and be safe out there.
You too. Thank you.
Chief Montella.
Chief Montella.
Yes.
I just want to say, you guys are doing a tremendous job of cleaning and deconning because none of the fire department or emergency response people are getting the COVID. So you guys are doing a really great job of keeping everything clean
Oh, God.
Yep, I'm gonna tap on that desk right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is Mr. Leslie on? I don't think he's on. I can't see all of my board.
I don't see him.
I think he's working tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's working.
All right, that'll bring us into the final public discussion segment. Is there anyone for public discussion?
I have, I have a motion I have to make before we do that.
Okay, make your motion.
Okay, the motion is to approve the borough two thousand twenty-one budgets for the purpose of legal advertising for the twelve twenty-one adoption of our budgets and including our inspection period. Okay, so that's, I'm making the motion. We have to do it so we, John can advertise these budgets for me.
Thank you, Janice. Who has a second?
I'll second it.
Mrs. Fuchs, all in favor? Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone for public discussion?
A quick question, Janice. Mr. Wilworth will be doing the advertising that the budget is available for public inspection?
Yes, he is. We have, we have it from last year.
All right, and he will be advertising as well the tax and revenue ordinances, is that correct?
Yes, he will. Thank you.
Okay.
We always.
It's some public discussion, Mr. Wilson. Is there anyone for public discussion? Last call.
John, I'll go with you.
Going once?
Yes, sir. My name is John Snyder.
Mr. Snyder, go ahead. State your name, please.
Yeah, John Snyder from SLD, representing Brookhaven Storage. If you guys remember, must have been August, September, you guys approved a plan for a storage facility on Brookhaven Road. Mr. Bullard is in serious, serious condition in the hospital with COVID, and he has basically sold the project to another developer. They're looking at making some small minor changes. About twelve hundred square foot building difference between the two plans. We're looking through engineering now. I think there's going to be some stormwater changes. And I was really looking for what's the direction on, how far do we need to start over? Is this something we want to submit to the, to Chuck? And, and Catania, let them review it and give us some direction, or what, what's the flavor?
That's exactly what you do.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Charles, you go with that?
That's fine.
All right, sir. Thank you, John. And I'm sorry to hear the bad news. Hope he comes out well.
Have, have a good holiday.
You too, sir. Thank you. Last call for public discussion. One, two, three, public discussion's closed. Anything from council or any of the other officials?
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Be safe.
Janice?
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Be safe. I'll see you on December seventh.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, all.